All right, welcome everybody to the meeting of Victoria City Council for Tuesday, October the 5th, 2021. Ms. Hilbrick, if you would, please call the roll.
Councilman Delagoza.
I am present.
Mayor Protem Solis.
Here.
Councilwoman Crocker.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Young.
Here.
Councilman Loughran.
Here.
And Mayor Bocknight.
Here. All right, thank you, thank you. If you will, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence following that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, Mr. Garza, do you have any announcements or reminders?
We do have one announcement. I want to ask Kristi Euchard to come up with Keep Victoria Beautiful.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I am happy to be here once again to announce our October Business Beautification Award, and for that I have our new Board Chair, Meredith Byrd, to present that.
Good evening, Council. On behalf of Keep Victoria Beautiful, I am proud to present the Business Beautification Award for the month of October to Tokyo Grill. We give this award to businesses that embody the mission of Keep Victoria Beautiful, which is to enhance the livability of Victoria by beautification through a sense of pride and ownership. Tokyo Grill is a shining example of that mission, and their pride is evident in the healthy, colorful landscaping, the gorgeous outdoor seating areas, and the beautiful condition of the property as a whole. Tonight, we honor Mr. Albert Chen of Tokyo Grill as our October Award winner.
Thank you so much.
Yes, we did, we got a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is that all for announcements?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Hilbrick, will you please help me out with this proclamations?
Okay, the first one we're going to have is item two, B2A, which is the 4-H Week Proclamation. So whereas the city of Victoria is proud to honor the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service for 114 years of providing experienced based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State, and whereas this admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop skills, life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society, and where it is, as it is more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from eight to 19, held from diverse ethnic and socio-economical backgrounds and truly represent a cross-section of the state, and whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success without it has today were it not for the service of its more than 22,000 volunteers, and whereas throughout its proud history, the 4-H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans and through its innovative and inspiring programs. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Bocknight, Mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, do officially designate October 3rd through 9th, 2021, to be National 4-H Week in Victoria, Texas, and commend the 4-H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success.
Thank you. Paige Melton, the Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension Agent for the 4-H Youth Development Program here in Victoria County, and I have some of my senior 4-H ambassadors here that I'd like to recognize. We have Ms. J.C. Rossler, Trapper Fearbacher, Kaitlin John, Bennett Jansen, Cody and Maddie Nunez. They are also state health ambassadors that do healthy living education throughout the community also, and then Carly Parsons. And so they're going to tell you just a couple seconds about what National 4-H is and give you a little update on our 4-H program, but I personally want to say thank y'all for your support. If it wasn't for our community and our businesses supporting 4-H, we would not have 4-H in this county. We know that volunteers and businesses like you truly run and make those dreams and goals able to be accomplished. So we thank y'all so much, and we brought you a little suite there for you for later. So I'll have them just give you a little bit of update on our program real quick.
More than 6 million young people across the country will be celebrating National 4-H Week. It is an annual celebration of 4-H held the first full week of October. This is a week that our youth showcase the great things that 4-H offers young people and highlights the incredible 4-H youth in our community who work each day to make a positive impact on the community.
National 4-H Week is also a week that we recognize our volunteers, sponsors, donors, and supporters. We know our program would not function without the time, dedication, and passion of these hardworking individuals in our community.
The Victoria County 4-H program has 18 different community and club projects across the county for youth to be a part of. Some of the major projects our youth participate in are shooting sports, livestock, food and nutrition, outdoor education, and leadership.
Last year, we had over 550 active 4-H members and hundreds of volunteers. Our goal as ambassadors is to increase our membership even more through the new 4-H year and to continue to spread the word about 4-H and all it offers.
As you're leaving, I'd just like to say thank you, thank you especially to those of you that spoke. Being someone that sits up here, sometimes I'm not all that comfortable speaking in front of the microphone. They all did a great job.
Thank you.
Item B2B is the Walk to End Alzheimer's Day proclamation. Whereas Alzheimer's disease has affected 6.2 million Americans of all ages in 2021, and approximately 400,000 Texans are affected by Alzheimer's disease. Texas ranks fourth in the number of Alzheimer's disease cases and second in the number of Alzheimer's disease deaths in the United States. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is an irreversible brain disease that slowly destroys memory skills, thinking skills, and eventually the ability to carry out daily activities, leading to the need for full-time care, dementia is a general term for a group of brain disorders that cause problems with thinking, memory, and behavior. Alzheimer's disease is the most common type. And whereas Alzheimer's Association is the leading volunteer health organization in Alzheimer's care, support, and research. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Bocknight, Mayor of the city of Victoria, do officially designate October 9th, 2021, to be Walk to End Alzheimer's Day in Victoria, Texas, and urge all citizens to recognize the contribution of the Alzheimer's Association in fighting against this disease.
Mayor, can you come back up front to grab a picture? We weren't able to grab this picture before the meeting. If that's all right? Feel free to step forward.
We just want to say thank you very much for the city's support for the Walk to End Alzheimer's. I've been with this group since the beginning we started, and they've raised a lot of money to fight this disease. We're up to, we're trying to get 38,000 is our new goal. We took a step back because of the pandemic, but we're, we're back in business. And Karen has a few things to say. And once again, we thank all of y'all for your support, and we thank all of you for what you do.
And out of that 38,000, 30,000 has been raised so far, and Bettina Garza has been the driving force for that. She is, she is a great leader, and we've had a lot of very successful fundraisers. The walk is at Victoria College this weekend. There are still sponsorship opportunities available for $250 a table, and you, we would love to see everyone come out. It's going to be at nine o'clock, the ceremony, 9:30 is the walk. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Item B, item B2C. Is the National Night Out proclamation. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug, and violence prevention program on Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, called National Night Out, and whereas National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Victoria to join forces with thousands of other communities across the nation in promoting cooperative police, community, crime, and drug prevention efforts, and whereas the Victoria community plays a vital role in assisting the Victoria Police Department throughout joint crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in Victoria, and the city of Victoria is supporting National Night Out 2021 locally, and whereas it is essential that all citizens of Victoria be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact of that participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, violence, and violence in Victoria, whereas police, community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Bocknight, Mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, do hereby call upon all citizens of Victoria to join the city of Victoria Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting National Night Out on October 5th, 2021, and do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, as National Night Out in Victoria, Texas.
Let me just say quickly, thank you. Really appreciate the support this community's given our police department, along with the fire department. We've got a big evening planned. We're going to try to hit every single block party that we can. I've got my command staff and officers spread out throughout the city. We've been planning for this all year, and we're excited about it. But again, Mayor, Council, thank you for the proclamation. It means a lot to have your support. God bless you all. Thank you.
You're not going to get off that easy because Shane made it back for the picture.
That's my specialty, pictures.
Might have to redo all of them.
And item B2D is the Fire Prevention Week proclamation. Whereas the city of Victoria is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Victoria, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019, the fire department in the United States responded to 339,500 home fires, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you, you can, alerting you to the danger in the event of a fire, whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas Victoria residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sound of the alarms and knows how to respond, and whereas Victoria residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared, whereas Victoria residents will make, make sure their home, their smoke and CO alarms meet the needs of all family members, whereas the Victoria Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through the prevention and protection education, and whereas Victoria residents who are responsive to public education measures are better able to make personal steps to increase their safety from fire, whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme, Learn the Sour, Sound of Fire Safety, effectively serves to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke and carbon monoxide alarms. Therefore, I, Jeff Bocknight, Mayor of the city of Victoria, Texas, do hereby proclaim October 3rd through 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week, and I urge all the people of Victoria to learn the sounds of fire safety for Fire Prevention Week 2021, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Victoria Fire Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Tom Legler. I'm the Fire Marshal. I have my inspector investigators Frank Noronho, John Stari, and Kevin Lampert here with us. Thank you so much for your continued support in our fire prevention efforts. We are continually striving to try to reduce the impact of, of fires, whether it be injuries or property damage, and this proclamation just brings out more attention to what we're doing. Thank you again so much.
Thank you all for what y'all do. All right, that's it for the proclamations. Can we get you a water? Do you have any other public or boy recognitions?
Yeah, about 10 of them. I'm just kidding. We do not.
Michael one, Michael two, Michael 10.
Yeah, there you go. Yes, Michael turns four months today.
All right, congratulations.
Okay, items from council. I have one, there are two quick items. One, I'm going to move, I'm going to move redistricting up because we have a number of people here to listen to that presentation, and that's the city manager report. I'm going to do that right after citizens' communication. And then I wanted to remind you all of our speed hump policy discussion that we had at the work session, and hopefully y'all will be getting a draft policy that we can discuss at the next meeting during items from council, not taking action on, but just to work on.
I'd like to pull C5.
Sure.
C5 or D5?
D5.
Oh, D5. D5, I'm sorry. There is no C5.
I'd like to make a comment. Items on the consent agenda, D2, 3, and 4, to me, those are very important commercial variances, and my first reaction was to pull them so that we could have some discussion, because I think that the planning commission benefits from council discussion, and I think the planning department probably does also. I've studied them, and I've determined that I personally am in support of those variances, and so I'm not going to ask to pull them, but I think just in the future, I'm just concerned when we have commercial variances that if there is some thought on it, I probably will pull them in the future. And I didn't know if anybody else had the same feelings, but I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you for that, and very appropriate. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we're going to do citizens' communication. I'm sorry I misspoke earlier, and then do the redistricting presentation. So citizens' communication right now, I have two comment cards for this portion, and then Mr. Klimas, you're going to speak during the public hearing for animal control ordinance? Okay, great. So Michael Von der Rohe.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and city mayor. I'm Michael Von der Rohe. I live at 2204 East North Street, Lot 28. We have a lot of abandoned trailer houses, and it's just getting worse. They demolished two of them last month, and on trailer 10, it's on the building and standards commission on October the 14th, and it is a safety issue for police officers because these doors are not secure, you know, and they're wide open. And I was hoping, you know, someone could look into it. We have had code enforcement and building inspectors checking everything out, and I want to thank the legal department and animal control for working on that. Animal codes, and I wanted to thank the police department, animal control, working together to fight animal abuse. The first hearing of the dog abuse case was yesterday, so I want to thank the DA's office for prosecuting the case. You know, I would like to see more animal abuse cases prosecuted. You know, 90% of the people take care of their animals correctly, but what about the 10% that don't, you know? And anyway, thanks and have a good day. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Ashley McGee?
Hi, I'm Ashley McGee. I am on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I would like to be reappointed. This will be my second term as Parks and Recreation Commissioner, and that is on the agenda today, and I just wanted to express my interest, and I'd like to serve again this year if, if I'm able to do so. Also, I am submitting a form for y'all to see. It is about Segway scooters, and I think y'all have already been kind of notified that we would like to rent Segway scooters in the park at my business, Flow Paddle Co. And that is some literature for you to look over. We'd like to get it on the agenda next month so I could talk about this further, what we'd like to offer. They are scooters that they go no higher than 20 miles per hour. We would only allow them to be used in Riverside Park, which is a 25, I mean 20 mile per hour only area. I would rent them out at my office, and they would have to be returned to the office, so I would take the liability of those scooters. And then those are, there's two types on there. There's like a moped style, both of them top out at 18.6 miles per hour. The moped style, we would be wanting to get two next month, and then we would want to get four of the black ones you see, and with every scooter rental, we would also include a helmet. So that's just kind of some information for you to look over and take home, and then if I could get it on the agenda for next month, I'd like to talk about it further. And that's all I have for y'all today. If y'all have any questions for me, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Gooch, can we put that on items from council for next week? Because I'd like to get some more information from her at that time so we could also discuss it, but also maybe from your office, what we would need to do, if anything, to consider allowing these in the park and rules, regulations around it and stuff.
I also did meet with Allison Lacy, Legal Department, and we met with the Director of Parks and Rec, and I did present to the commission as well. So I'm working towards y'all.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we're going to close citizens' communication, and Mr. Gooch will lead us in the city manager report, overview and training for redistricting process, F1.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I'm here to kick off the process. I won't be doing much leading except in the sense that I'm talking first. Thomas Gooch, City Attorney, here to talk about the redistricting process and to kick that off tonight. I have tonight to lead the discussion, Rezn Pullum, who's sitting behind me and who will be leading most of the training and discussion today and answering the questions that I was unable to answer two weeks ago when we last addressed this issue. Rezn was born in Tyler, but I told him we won't hold that against him. He's welcome to move here anytime he wants. He did his undergraduate work in, at the University of Houston, in Houston, and graduated law school from the Thurgood Marshall School of Law there at Texas Southern University. And so he has joined the Borquez Law Firm, who we have hired to lead our redistricting process, and he's here tonight to explain to you how the process works and what city council's role is. At the request of the mayor, we're going to try to keep this a tight presentation tonight, and we're going to talk tonight primarily about council's role, and the detailed training for the committee members will be held actually at the first meeting of the committee later in the future.
And you did explain to them that this is the original City of Roses?
This is the original City of Roses.
Well, you might have a little hard time telling Earl Campbell that, but that's fine. No, Mayor and Council, it's a pleasure to be in front of you. Thank you, Thomas, for that great introduction. As you said, my name is Rezn Pullum. I'm here on behalf of the Borquez Law Firm, here to give you guys a little bit of training on the redistricting process. Now, hopping straight into it, we're going to be talking about what redistricting is, why we do it, and how it's done, what you guys will be able to do, and your role in this whole thing. So redistricting is the process of drawing the single-member district boundaries to where we are getting the population imbalance for each district. That is because we need to have at least a substantial population so that everybody has a chance to vote and elect representatives of their choice. Now, as you know, the census is conducted every 10 years, and it counts the US residents where they live as of April 1. Now, with the pandemic, of course, things were kind of slowed down, but we're on ball to be finishing this redistricting process by the top of the year. So what it's about, people might say it's about numbers, it's about streets, but in reality, what it's all about is people. You know, the neighborhoods and the communities, having those members that are part of your community be elected as representatives, being able to make sure your vote counts the same as everybody else's. So what we need to do is to redistrict into where we're making the population substantially equal so that everybody's vote counts just about the same. If you have one district that has 5,000 and a district that has 10,000 people, that district with 5,000 is going to have a stronger vote than those in 10,000 district. So that's what this process is kind of about. What we have here are some of the Texas statistics from this year's census. As you can see, we're coming in right about under 30 million people, making us the second largest state behind California as far as population goes. And if we take a look at your Victoria data, just some of the immediate numbers we were able to pull, you see that your 2010 population was at 57,740 people, and now your 2020 population, as taken by the Census Bureau, is at 65,534. So with that anticipated growth, you know, we anticipate having to redistrict and redraw you all's boundaries, but that is going to be something that we present to the committee that you are giving, and that is going to be a part of the initial assessment report in which we will provide. One of the things that we use as our guiding principles, and you'll see in the next slide, the five of them, is your city charter. And as you know, you have four single-member districts, two of which, I mean, six members, four single-member districts elected from those four, and then two elected from the super districts, one and two, and three and four. Now, as I previously mentioned, there's going to be five basic legal principles in which govern the process and which is going to be the things that we're using to guide us. That's going to be your home rule charter, how you have it set up, the one-person, one-vote constitutional principle, Section 2 of the US Voting Rights Act, the Shaw versus Reno line of cases, and also Texas election laws that affect redistricting and drawing those boundaries. What you might not see up here that you would have seen maybe 10 years ago or in early redistricting processes is Section 5 of the US Voting Rights Act. That part of the Voting Rights Act was actually stricken down and made That part of the Voting Rights Act was actually stricken down and made a little less powerful by the court case of Shelby County versus Holder. That simply says for us that we're not going to have to do the preclearance that was required, which is the submittal of the report and all annexation, everything that's going on in the city to the DOJ. Now, we're not gonna have to do that, but what we tend to do, and what we do as a firm, is we still abide by that process so that we're providing you guys with something that is legally defensible and sound. Getting into a little bit of the overview of these principles, the one-person-one-vote constitutional principle says exactly that, you know, the members in which the elected body is drawn from needs to be substantially equal. And one of the tools that we use to guide us in this is called the total maximum deviation. Now, I am a lawyer, but I'm a little good with math, so that's gonna be the part that lies heavily on us and the demographer. And to explain that a little bit, what we do is we take your largest district, we subtract from it the ideal size based on your 2020 census data, and then we get a percentage by dividing that by that ideal size. We do that same calculation for your lowest populated district, and then we combine the percentages of those two numbers. If those two numbers combine to equal more than 10%, then you're going to need to redistrict. According to the court cases, 10% or less has been the permissible total maximum deviation that is allowed. So that's what we're aiming for, to strike that balance. Section two of the US Voting Rights Act is a principle that essentially stands for the protected minority groups, they have to have the same opportunity as everybody else to elect representatives of their choice. Now, in order to do that, some of the things in which we must avoid is terms called cracking and packing. If you see on this slide, it's just one ideal option of how the lines are drawn, and it just shows a very basic population, kinda evenly distributed, and you see what could be an ideal situation. However, in this slide, nothing has changed except for where the lines are drawn. Now, what section two of the US Voting Rights does not allow is the diluting of the voting power of the minority group. If you look at the red, they're somewhat in contiguous areas, but their lines have been drawn in a way that it has fractured the voting power of those minorities. So one of the things that we're going to make sure we include in our criteria is not cracking those minority voters to leave us susceptible to a US section-two Voting Rights Act suit. Another thing in which we must be careful of is not to pack those protected minority voters. In this instance, same drawing, just different lines. You will see that in the red population, that most of those people have been put into one district. Now, that concentration of voting power could have been equally distributed throughout to where they may have had a majority in another district, but in this way, the, you know, the courts, they will look to, to see if you use race as a predominant factor in drawing the lines in this way. So we will try our best not to do any packing as well as cracking. Another one of the principles in which we use is Shaw versus Reno line of cases. This essentially stands for that although race may be used as a factor in the redistricting process, it cannot be the predominant factor and cannot subordinate what are the traditional criterias for conducting these redistricting process. What that means for us is that we're going to enact and have you guys establish resolutions that identify those criteria in which we've seen in court cases, which are tried and true, and will be presented here in this next couple of slides.
Could you, could you back up to
Yes, ma'am.
the slides before the pictures of the people?
Yes, ma'am.
Right there?
Yes.
Because I just was reading it, and that first, protected minority group must be large enough and geographically compact to constitute a majority in a district. And then your pictures, then you said something different.
Allow me to clear that up. So what you see here is the threshold test and the prongs that were used to bring a section-two US Voting Rights Act suit. So these are which, the things in which we're going to be observing and making sure that we're on top of. If there was a protected minority group that is large enough and has geographically compact contiguous nature, they may be able to bring the suit. However, the way in which we do this process, we're making it legally sound, and the criteria in which we identify and adopt, will make sure that we're missing this threshold and not making ourselves open for the suit.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So a little bit about the process, we've already begun to obtain local population data from you guys, and we have started on conducting the initial assessment. That essentially is getting your city boundaries, your new annexations, getting all of that information from your staff, and inputting that, overlaying that into maps that our demographer can use to conduct that initial assessment. Now, the initial assessment is gonna tell us whether or not you guys need to redistrict. That calculation that I had mentioned before is gonna be a part of that initial assessment. So you'll be able to see the breakdown of demographics, where each minority group lives, you'll also be able to see which districts are out of whack. In addition to that, we'll be establishing the criteria and guidelines, which you guys will see. That'll be one thing that will be very important for the council, because you will be passing a resolution. However, we will be presenting this to the committee, and they will come back with criteria as identified by you guys, identified by communities of interest, that will help shape and guide this process. You've already somewhat determined your approach to civic engagement by enlisting a committee, and that's what we've seen in a lot of the cities in which we represent. They enlist a task force to kinda make sure that the civic engagement part is very heavily present, and nobody's, we're being as transparent as possible. The map drawing process is really fun, we have a great demographer, his name is Jeremy McMahon, and the software is amazing. You can literally take some of these streets, draw it, you'll put it in a different district, and it'll update the numbers right there in front of you, which I think is a very helpful tool in what we're gonna be doing in this process. Lastly, we'll be submitting with you guys the report in which we would've submitted to the DOJ, and that will require an adoption of the new plan by the city council. As you can see here, these are some of the redistricting criteria in which we've identified. These are the tried and true guidelines that have been tested by case law, and been some of the more important criteria that have been used and identified. As you can see, we're gonna try our best to avoid splitting neighborhoods, you know, communities of interest, that's gonna be big for us, relying on you guys to get us the information that we need in order to identify and keep those communities intact. One of the things that I've identified for you, I think the mayor had a question about, composed of the holding voting precincts. As best as possible and when practical, we're gonna keep those voting precincts intact. However, there may come a time in which the best way for us to balance those districts is to take a smaller level, which would be a census block, take that out of a voting precinct, and put it into another district. Now, when we do that, what we have to be aware of is aligning and communicating with Victoria County, because they will need that information as to make sure to give the voters enough notice so they know where they will be voting in the next election. As I said, also, we'll be adopting guidelines for citizen map submissions. Now, sometimes what we have seen, the very smart, avid, engaged citizen come up, he's like, oh, I got the, I got the best district, I drew this district, guys, this is the best one in Texas. That's fine, but we need to redistrict the entire city. We need to know the effects that that has on the rest of the districts, the numbers and demographics, so that we are making sure to give you guys something that is legally defensible and sound. Another one of the things that we require is that it be in writing. These guidelines for the citizen maps are gonna be very closely similar to those in which we adopt, because we want them to have the same rules of the game that we're playing. So those are gonna be two of the resolutions that you're gonna be adopting. Civic engagement, this process is really driven by civic engagement, and as I said before, I commend you guys for enlisting a committee of members of the city of Victoria to, you know, help us with the process, identify where those lines are, identify the communities of interest. We will be posting all notices and maps to the city website and within city hall, and we will be conducting public hearings. So we're heavily expecting public engagement and involvement, and we actually, you know, encourage it, because that's gonna get us the best-drawn districts and have you guys ready for your elections come May. Now, speaking of those elections, we've identified what is a kinda tentative timeline based on some of the things we have ahead of us. Our absolute last date in which we would have this completed would be January 18th. Now, realistically, we would try to get that a little bit beforehand, give us some wiggle room, but our consideration is that, is we want all incumbents and future candidates to know exactly where they're going to be elected from, where their districts are, before that first day to file the place on the ballot. So that is our aiming point, and what's, that's gonna hang on or hinge on is some of the variables that are included in this slide. It's the number of maps requested, the number of maps submitted by the public. You know, we try to do a thorough report of each of the maps so that you guys can see and know exactly what's going on in each of these drawings, because that's, that's part of the job, that's part of the duty as required by the Constitution and guiding principles. Our next steps is gonna be the initial assessment, as I stated, and that is going to consist of the overlay of your current districts with the population that we retrieved from the 2020 census. Now, after that, in that report is gonna be our recommendation of whether you need to continue with the redistricting process, based on whether that total maximum deviation exceeds 10%.
We've already done that.
Yes, so
You can go ahead and skip the number two.
Yes, yes.
That's why we hired you.
Mayor, you may remember that I threw up some preliminary numbers at the last meeting where I, where I showed that I believe that we are significantly beyond the 10%, and that's why I recommended hiring the firm. However, please understand, that was my internal calculations. You're looking at an attorney who is good at math and an attorney who is not good at math, so I recommend that you trust his numbers over mine.
Yeah, so simply, our demographer is gonna be taking the census data that we received from the government, from you guys, overlaying that and making sure that those numbers are accurate, and that we continue this process. Next things are gonna be those resolutions that I mentioned with the criteria for the maps and the citizen maps that are gonna be submitted. And with that, that is the end of my prepared presentation, I will take any questions if you guys have any.
Well, I got a question. We know that District 3 has grown substantially more than other districts such as 1 and 2. Why wouldn't you blindly move precincts just to see what happens as a starting point? Seems like there's an awful lot of background data that y'all are going into, where I was just envisioning this precinct moves over here, this one over there, this one over here, because you know the population, does that not work?
It depends on where the districts are and how close they are to the ones that may be out of whack.
I was thinking borderline ones that would easily move into another district.
Yeah, and that's very possible, it could be a very simple process, as much as making a clean incision in one district and moving that over. And even, we have the ability to either overpopulate or underpopulate a certain district based on anticipated growth or reduction in that district. So if you've identified one district as having substantial growth and you anticipate that happening over the next 10 years, then it might be in your best interest to kinda underpopulate that in a little bit, still meeting that total maximum deviation, but so that it's not all out of whack in the next time we go through this.
Yeah, and I think one of the challenges y'all might have is that the three precincts that make up District 3 are large, is there a recommendation to add precincts? Like splitting one of the, some of the large ones up into other precincts, or what's that process?
Right, so as kinda identified, we wanna try to keep those intact as much as possible, but where that isn't going to be possible or practicable, we can literally take what's called the census block, which are the smaller, smaller ones, they're about the size of a city block, and we could take little bits out of that precinct to put into the district that may need that population. So whenever we do that, we're gonna have to be in line with Victoria County, just make sure our notices are going to them, and that they are able to get out the information as needed to the voters.
I worry about a little bit of confusion if you split one of those by census blocks and it's not a new-numbered precinct. Does it confuse people? Although, you know, we've changed election process where you can vote at any location, so it really doesn't have a lot of bearing on it, but...
Yes, sir. To that point, I don't have an answer for you right now, but I believe that it shouldn't be a factor as, as you stated.
Okay.
Mayor and council, if there are no other questions, I just wanna wrap this evening's presentation up by saying, great job, Rezn. And I know we threw a lot of information at you tonight, it was our desire to try to keep this down to a reasonable period of time, but that hasn't changed the amount of information that's coming at you, and so it might've felt a bit like a waterfall. I'm gonna make sure that each of you has a copy of the PowerPoint presentation that was submitted tonight, so that you can review it in your own time. I'm gonna make sure that the committee members also have copies of the PowerPoint presentation, and I'm also gonna look at getting this presentation up on our website by the end of the week, so that the community can go through this at their own pace as well. I think it's important that the community have as much access to this information as we do, because as he said, this is a very community-driven process.
Is that committee gonna be posted, its meeting times?
Those committee meetings are not necessarily publicly posted under the Open Meetings Act, but we can certainly make it known when those are happening, if that's your desire.
Might, might be worthwhile.
Absolutely.
And as you're putting things on the site, I know that theoretically you can find this map if you dig, but if, if you could put that map with a presentation or something along those lines, so that people understand what we're talking about up here with the three precincts and so forth.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Rezn.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
All right, that concludes the city manager reports for this evening, executive session.
Let's do it, we wrapping up? Skip through the whole thing.
We'll go into items with public hearing, C1.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending and re-adopting Chapter 4 of the City Code of Ordinances relating to animals and fowl.
Okay, this item does require a public hearing, and we have one person that wishes to speak for it, Mr. Klimas. Good to see you.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I think the fact I'm your one speaker speaks to commend the city attorney's office on taking the information from the public meetings and the input, and taking a 32-page document and knocking it down to a 16-page document. So I would commend them on that. But what happens, and as you know the reason for three readings, and I assume this is the first,
Yes, sir.
is to get input as to areas which may be of concern when it's being rewritten. I'm not gonna go into the little areas, because I think there's plenty of time for me and the city attorney, or I can email them to them, but there are two or three major areas that need to be addressed when you're looking at the proposed ordinance. When you look at section 4-23, which deals with, I believe the phrase is impoundment of animals disposition, and I don't know if this was inadvertent, or if it can just be very easily corrected, but in the first sentence, you'll notice a catchphrase, or otherwise in violation of the provisions of this chapter, and the only chapter is the entire Chapter 4 ordinance. So when you read that, it basically says in conjunction with the next B and E, that any violation, you don't pick up poop, you don't do, your dogs bark, animal control can confiscate your, impound your animal, five days' notice if you don't claim them, and under E, have them euthanized. I can't fathom that that's the intent behind it. So I'd ask that when you're looking at the wording of it, that that catchphrase, if it's supposed to be delineated to a specific part, make sure that happens, but not a catchphrase of any violation. I, I just, I don't believe that was the intent of it.
Mr. Klimas, you said 423?
4-23A.
A?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any animal abandoned or otherwise in violation of the chapter. And the chapter, because that's a section and an article, the chapter is the entire ordinance. The second major one would be in 4-40, and again, I commend them on rewriting it, and obviously taking out the limitation on numbers, I'm the only speaker here, but in But, in that one, again, you have a reference to eight-twenty-two-point-oh-four-two-two of the Health and Safety Code. Now, I know I'm looking at two attorneys on the city council, and welcome to Mr. Crocker, be careful what you wish for. But, I had to read it four or five times, because that chapter, eight-twenty-two-oh-four-two-two, has to be read in conjunction with the preceding and following chapters of the Health and Safety Code. Now, as my wife has often reminded me, it's only fortunate that I'm an attorney, but most people aren't. And my fear is by, I understand the incorporation, because it has to be elected by you as a city council. Otherwise, it only applies to two and a half million population counties. I don't think we're there quite yet. The downtown project might get us there. But, the concern I have is how are we going to safeguard people such as what just happened? Or kids, you know, people with their dogs of what eight-twenty-two is? Because under eight-twenty-two, it allows a provision for dangerous dogs. It allows a citizen's complaint sworn out by any citizen, that if animal control officer deems is valid, they can go pick up the animal and impound it. Now, I know all of you probably love pets, you know my feeling on it. You can't take a fifteen-year-old dog that's lived with somebody in their home and put him in the pound for ten days and expect a good story to end. So, I would ask that you look at how to address eight-twenty-two. I understand the city attorney wanting eight-twenty-two in there. I mean, it's adopted in most of the big cities. But in Victoria, I, my concern is how to communicate to everyone what the responsibilities. And I do believe that that determination of a dangerous dog should not be within the realm of animal control officer, but rather within the realm of a municipal court judge, pure and simple. In conjunction with that, there are provisions that if your animal is impounded later in it, that it can be impounded or at the pound or at a, a certified veterinarian or your home. I would ask to be mandatory that anyone has a right, if they wanna pay for it, if there is a problem with an animal that is a pet, to have it impounded at a certified veterinarian clinic. It's, it's hard enough as it is, but these kids are family to us. And I don't think that's gonna be asking a lot, and it may alleviate a lot of the tension that goes on with this ordinance. The only other thing which is small is when you're defining wild animals and you can't feed, uh, wild animals, please understand the way it's written, it includes birds, squirrels, and ducks. And I think our former mayor, Will Armstrong, would have a problem with the duck part, I know, and the squirrels. So, just maybe if we can make it a little broader, just cover the, our critters that are at the park, and the ones at the downtown square, so that no one gets in trouble for doing it, 'cause we're all gonna do it anyway. That's part of the charm of a small town. Again, I wanna commend you all, seriously, this is a, this is a tough subject, it really is. It touches people purposely. And the city attorney, as I said, has done an incredible job on taking the input and refining it down to where it is. And I'd offer any assistance I can handle. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klimas. All right, um, so with that, we're gonna close the public hearing portion on item C1, and then we can entertain any motions, put it on the floor.
Mr. Gooch, if we were to entertain a motion, would we, if we wanted to incorporate some of those changes that Mr. Klimas was talking about, would that have to be put into the motion?
Here's what I recommend, Mayor, uh, Mayor Potemus Solis, is that we have a motion in a second, just to put this item on the floor for discussion. I have a presentation I'd like to go through very quickly to go over the changes that are made. I also have a slate of amendments that I'm going to propose based on some changes that we've recognized need to be made since we posted this online for the public to review. After that, if there are additional changes that council would like to make tonight, I'm happy to take those down, and I would bring those back to you at the next meeting, to give me time to review those and to make sure that we don't have any unintended consequences by changing a sentence here and not realizing it impacts something somewhere else. I, I will be sitting down with Mr. Klimas if he so desires to go over the changes. I've been making notes tonight, and I'm happy to review his changes with him as well.
Okay.
And that's also why we've kept it at three readings, instead of combining them in that second and third. So, if we go through this tonight, if we wanna do any of these amendments that are already printed, we can get those incorporated this time, we can look at it again, everybody in the community can look at it again, scrub it again, make any other amendments on the second reading, and if we still need to at the third reading, we can do so.
Okay.
So, it gives us a lot of time to make amendments. We wanna get this right.
Yes, sir. Okay, I move that we accept, um, item C1.
I second it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gooch.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I will try to keep this brief. This is a quick overview of the changes that have been made as a result of the town hall meetings. And I'll start with a quick timeline to review where we are. You'll remember, we started this process on August seventeenth by bringing to you proposed revisions to the code based on some suggestions from the Animal Control Division. Over the next two weeks, we had town hall meetings and a council workshop discussion to get additional feedback. And I published this proposal, the second proposal, online last week, September twenty-eighth. Tonight is the first reading, as the mayor said, and a public hearing. We intend to have a second public reading, excuse me, public hearing and reading on October nineteenth, and a final reading on November second. So, we still have a ways to go before we get to the end of this path. Some general overviews, uh, general, uh, high points of the changes in this draft. First, this draft eliminates the cap on number of pets per household. That proposal proved to be unpopular, and we have simply eliminated it entirely. Second, we are eliminating fees for the surrender of animals or litters. That was also a proposal that our community was not, uh, aligned with. And the feedback that I got from council at our session a couple of weeks ago was, we, that you do not want to impose that. And so, we are not going to include that in the ordinance as, as well. Third, we have eliminated a large amount of text based on text that was duplicative of state law. Some of the feedback we heard from citizens was asking us to change things in our code that we couldn't, because it was in state law. And then we had other citizens asking us to add other provisions of state law that weren't in our code. And it just quickly became clear that that was not helpful to our community. So, what you see in this proposal is only Victoria's local regulations. Next, what I did is I went and I reorganized the entire chapter in order to enhance its accessibility for the public. Under the old chapter, you found things in unusual places. For example, all of our local regulations for dangerous dogs were stuck in Article One, which was titled "In General." And you had to scroll through three pages of definitions before you ever found the section that had to do with dangerous dogs. And so, what I've tried to do is create eight articles that clearly identify what this chapter is about. And then I tried to stick the different sections into the article where it made the most sense. So, today, if you wanna know what are the standards that you have to abide by as a pet owner, you can look in Article Three, Standards for Animal Care, and everything is lumped there, such as our leash law. So, the articles that we have now are first "In General," which is just definitions. We have an enforcement article that is not only animal control's responsibilities, but also the penalty provisions associated with the code. We have three, Article Three, which is Standards for Animal Care, including the leash law and other requirements for, uh, maintaining your pet's health. Then we have Dangerous Dogs, which is our local regulations that enhance what is in state law. The dangerous dog provision, as you know, is entirely governed by state law when it comes to determining whether a dog is deemed a dangerous dog. But then state law says that we can implement our own rules. And so, this article includes such things as what type of secure enclosure do you have to keep a dangerous dog in? I'm seeing some questioning looks around the table. It might be that you're wondering, "I thought dangerous dogs had to be put down." They don't. We know of at least, I know of at least two dogs in town that have been deemed dangerous dogs, and the owners have elected to keep those dogs, and they are subject to higher restrictions in order to keep the public safe. But you can choose to keep, uh, a dangerous dog on your property if you choose to do so. That's different from serious bodily injury. If a dog commits serious bodily injury against a person, then the judge puts, orders that dog to be put down. So, that's two different classes, both of those things are governed by state law. Is there a question about that in particular before I move on? I'm seeing some questioning looks around the table. Okay, uh, Article Five is livestock and fowl? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I think at one of the town hall meetings, somebody asked a question about who determines, uh, if a dog is dangerous. And they were told the people at Animal Control determine that.
Thank you, that's a great question. If a dog attacks a person, I'm trying to choose my, my description here carefully. If, if there's a situation where a dog attacks a person, there is a gray threshold, where if that injury is bad enough, then it's considered serious bodily injury, and it gets filed as that type of crime. If that dog, um, attacks a person, but the injury is not as bad, that can be a dangerous dog case. So can a situation where the dog threatens a person, but doesn't actually injure the person. And so, just like in a lot of areas of the law where you have, just to choose an example off the top of my head, you have homicide, you have, um, various different degrees of what we would call murder. On TV, they'll call it first-degree murder, second-degree murder, third-degree murder, right? You can think of it in the same way, where the animal control officer on the scene will make an initial determination about whether this should be charged as serious bodily injury or as a dangerous dog. And then the municipal prosecutor also has discretion to elevate or, or lower that, as the case may be, as the evidence presents. So, if, for example, the prosecutor is presented with a case where, I don't know, a person's arm was mangled and required stitches and hospitalization, the prosecutor might choose to prosecute that as serious bodily injury, even if the animal control officer submitted that as a dangerous dog. Does that make sense? So, yes, the, the Animal Control Division does have discretion, but so does the prosecutor.
So, final determination is by the prosecutor?
Final in the sense of time, yes, that happens second.
But it doesn't go to the judge after the prosecutor?
The prosecutor is going to prosecute that case to the judge, and the judge will make the decision about whether or not that dog is deemed a dangerous dog, if it's presented as a dangerous dog case. Or whether the dog has committed serious bodily injury, if it's presented as a serious bodily injury case. Those are two separate cases. The judge doesn't typically say, "I'm gonna change this from dangerous dog to serious bodily injury," or vice versa.
And the dog is held at a secured kennel location?
Yes, sir.
And there's three options for that?
Yes, sir. In the, in that, in the case of a dangerous dog, you're now talking about that dog being impounded at Animal Control. Right? The section that Mr. Klimas was referring to, as far as, um, impounding at a veterinarian or at home, I believe that is to do with rabies, all right? And I'll talk with him and clarify that to make sure that, that that's clear, um, on, on all sides.
And not to get too far in the weeds, but if it is impounded for ten days and, uh, fails to meet standards for the municipal court judge, and dog's released and not deemed dangerous dog, there's no charges there for the impoundment?
That's a great question. Uh, we have some animal control officers here, perhaps they would be able to answer that question?
So, the question is, if the dog's impounded for ten days, is there a charge if it's not deemed dangerous? So, the ten days comes at the rabies quarantine. So, if it bites somebody, then it's impounded for the ten days for the rabies quarantine. And that's when we can make the determination if we believe it's dangerous or not. So, if it's, if it bit somebody and it's in quarantine for ten days and it's deemed that it's not dangerous, they still have to pay for the quarantine because it bit, but they don't incur any other fees.
And, and is a bite the only thing that would put a dog into rabies quarantine? They have to bite someone before they can be quarantined?
Yes, so by state law, um, if, uh, if a dog or cat, typically, any mammal that bites has to be, um, investigated for, for rabies. Uh, dogs or cats, um, if they bite, they are quarantined for ten days, and a bite consists of breaking the skin. So, if a dog nips and it doesn't break the skin and just leaves like a welt, it, it's not submitted for quarantine for ten days. But if it does break the skin, the state says that we have to submit it or quarantine it for ten days. So, the circumstances of the bite also go to whether they can quarantine it at their house, and it has to be in no violation of any city ordinance as a, at the time of the bite to allow a home quarantine, or if they have a choice to go to a vet or animal control, because it wasn't violation. And, but when I say that, if it was that large and it was off its property when it bit, then it would have to go to a vet or animal control and would not be allowed at a home quarantine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. As you can see, there's a lot that goes into those determinations. Yes, ma'am.
Before you move on, I made a note when Mr. Klimas said that, that he felt like dangerous dog determination should be by judge and not animal control. And what you just said is that animal control makes the initial determination of which type of case they're going to submit, basically which type of dog they've deemed it to be. Uh, and so, I've just wondered about a little more discussion about that. I don't know if it's in the law or...
Thank you.
Animal control.
Under state law, there's two ways that a dog can be deemed dangerous. That can be a process that comes to the municipal court judge, or animal control can deem that dog dangerous on their own. That's under state law, and there's nothing that we can change in our code about that.
Okay.
Let, let me do add that if we do determine it dangerous, whoever owns the dog and we determine that it's a dangerous dog, they do have fifteen days to appeal our determination and take it up with the judge. And then the judge would hear their case at that time. So, just because we determine that a dog is dangerous doesn't mean that it's a hundred percent final. They still have a right to appeal to the judge.
So, Mr. Gooch was right then, that ultimately the judge does just make that determination in terms of time, if nothing else?
Yeah, so if they don't appeal within that fifteen days, then they have a total not, they have a total of thirty days to get into compliance with the dangerous dog regulations. Fifteen days is their window to appeal, but that also counts as their thirty days. So, if they don't appeal within the fifteen days, they only have essentially fifteen more days to get into compliance.
Thank you.
All right. This, this slide was intended to just kinda cover the reorganization of the chapter, uh, rather than diving that deep. But I, I'm happy to have this discussion, and we can dive off into the weeds at any point. I do think it is important that council have an opportunity to talk about any topic that you want to during this process. Um, and I am absolutely happy to, to take things in y'all's order rather than mine. All right, so moving on, let's talk about some of the specific changes. So, within Article Two, there's a change that I recommended to you, that impounded animals be held at least five business days. Our current code says three working days. In the initial proposal, I changed that to three calendar days. That was a mistake on my part, the community let me know that that was not a good idea. And based on community feedback, they wanted longer than three working days. They wanted, uh, and so my recommendation is to make that five business days. And you can see that in the text of four, section, uh, Section Four dash twenty-three-B. Uh, an animal so impounded shall be kept for no less than five business days unless proclaimed by their owner. Now, at, the effect of that recommendation will trickle down to Animal Control, and it will impact their operations. And David Gonzalez, Public Health Director, has asked for an opportunity to explain to you the impacts that this will have on their operation, so that you can make an informed decision about whether or not you want to accept my recommendation.
Thank you, Thomas. Good evening, Mayor, Council. I just really wanna touch on it very briefly, I know we have a lot of information to go over. Essentially, with this, with, we're anticipating it could cause some delays in response, um, to lower priority, uh, calls, uh, such as stray animals that are not aggressive in the public. Whenever you increase the impoundment time up to five days, it's gonna increase a bit of a backlog and a longer holding time in the facility itself, uh, which will then turn to us having to essentially, um, or possibly migrate, and most likely migrate to a managed intake process there at Animal Control. Uh, currently is an open intake process to where if you get a call, we receive a call that there's a stray dog, we get out there as soon as we can to get that dog, if, or, or a cat or any animal that we do keep. Um, or if folks are dropping off animals at the facility, we're pretty open about taking those in. With an increased holding time of five business days, that's gonna create a little bit of a backlog, or quite a bit of a backlog, in the facility during our busier months and busier seasons, um, which will in turn possibly cause, um, delays in responses to the public's calls for stray animals and those non-aggressive calls. Um, so I just wanted to go ahead and point that out to, to the council, the mayor, um, that that could have some unintended consequences on the back end, um, to where folks maybe are a little, um, I guess aggravated in the time that the response time that... I guess aggravated in the time that the response time that they may have to wait, you know, days or weeks to get a, a call before we get an opening in the shelter. So just a concern I want to bring to y'all.
So backlog because of the lack of available kennels?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So we have 18 kennels, I think, right now. So anytime you're, you have five days holding period and, and not three, it's going to create just, you know, essentially it's going to stop up. You know, obviously we have great support through rescue groups and organizations here in town. There's only so much that they can take as well. So I mean, they fill up as well as we do, so that, that's definitely a concern of ours.
David, would extended hours on, possibly on a Friday? You know, in case somebody can't go in on a Monday? If they could just get a little bit of extension, that might help and we could keep the three days.
Sure, and, and one thing we're, we're looking at also, Mayor Protemp is, is looking at additional hours. And we've had a discussion extensively, both extending hours during the week during an evening time, and as well as a Saturday possibly to allow for, you know, rescues and reclamations of, of animals there in the facility. So we're reviewing those. Obviously budgetary concerns is an issue when you have increased extended hours, you have increased times. But we're definitely absolutely discussing that and reviewing those possibilities.
So do y'all have temporary kennels if that should happen?
As far as overflow goes, I'm not sure if there's really no overflow capacity. We have the, you know, keeping them in humane conditions is the, you know, the primary goal. So we're not, you know, loading them up all in one, in, you know, kennels, combining ones that could possibly be an issue or of, you know, health issue or humane issue. So we really don't have a whole lot of overflow space per se out there.
And explain how that has an effect one more time on your response time to a complaint or an issue.
So what, essentially what it's going to, the longer time we have to hold animals, the less intake we're going to be able to have, less room we're going to have because they're going to be held in our facility longer and we're not able to process them out as quickly as, as we were before. It, it's, it's something we'll work with. It's, it's a process of changing our procedures, moving to, from an open intake to a managed intake. Managed intake is not different than a lot of cities. A lot of cities do managed intakes. But it causes delays in going and picking up animals or able to accept those that are going to be brought in the facility.
So should we pass this five day, five business day requirement? Will there be an effort to add more kennels?
That, that is a greater discussion. That's, that's a, adding more kennels is going to be a budget discussion that is determined by my bosses at the, at the Commissioner's Court because that, that, that's a facility addition, that's a whole, that's a large project that I couldn't, obviously commit ourselves to.
David, for the public to know why you're stressing over this, how many employees do y'all have so that way they know, okay, they only have two people, because I only seen two. But, you know, because that also determines how many days you're going to be able to keep the animals, you know?
True, and, and obviously staff is, is limited. I think right now we have ten, ten, fully staffed is 10 right now. Unfortunately, there are situations where there's staff out on medical leave and currently a situation we're in now, and things that cause us to be shorthanded. But again, you know, we, we work as hard and, you know, they work as hard as they can to, to address all the calls in a timely manner. But, you know, covering a county, and that, that's not all 10 employees that are on, out answering calls that, you know, there, there's shelter techs that are there taking care of the facility. You know, there, there are supervisors there, there's clerical staff. So right now, I think with all the situation we're in, I think we only have two ACO personnel that can respond.
They go out and pick up the dogs or the cats?
So if we're talking about what it is right now at three business days, if an animal got picked up late Wednesday afternoon before Thanksgiving, the first day would be Friday, next day would be Monday, so it'd be Tuesday, right?
Well, to be, for that, that example would be Wednesday because Friday's a county holiday. So it'd be, well, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday would be three days.
Is there, do you have any feel for if, if the animals are usually picked up within the first two days? Or is it, you know, scratching the surface at the very edge of the third day? You know, whether five days really is a necessary increase?
Best to step aside and let the experts answer that question.
Do people come running in and panting?
So right now with the three days that we do hold the animals, we're looking at an average length of stay for any animal in our facility to be anywhere from five to six days. And that's their entire stay with us, which will of course include some of the weekends. We do have some animals that stay a little longer, some that are gone a little sooner. Really, it's just a kind of a toss-up on what they're there. I mean, we have those good owners who are there the day, the minute that those animals are gone, they're there to pick up. But then again, we have other animals that are never picked up. Owners don't come look and we're holding them. One of my concerns that I, I brought up to David with the five days, we also, by extending that five days, we also push back the time in which a rescue can start to pull that animal. So they, most of our rescues that we work with won't even look at the animal till after their stray hold period is up. So they wouldn't even start looking at these animals till the fifth day. So you're looking at a, you know, upwards of probably 10-day hold for these animals to be in the facility, even if we're sending them out to a rescue. So that, that's where that backlog comes in, is that we're just holding longer. And again, we're, we're willing to, to do what we can to accommodate that to the best of our abilities.
So are, are there times now, I think you said there's 18 kennels, are there times now where those kennels are completely full?
Yes.
And, and what do you do with dogs that are taken in or animals that are taken in when your 18 kennels are full now?
So right now, when the 18 kennels are full, we do have the ability, because these are inside-outside runs, they do have a guillotine door that separates them. You can split them. We don't like to split them because the cleaning process for that, if an animal's in the kennel, it has to be removed to be cleaned and then put back. So there's not a lot of room to, to work with them. So that's where you find a lot of that unfortunate time and space euthanasia happening, where you have to take the animal that's been there five days already and you have to make the decision to euthanize that animal to bring in the next animal that's needing to be held for its three days. And so we have to make those tough decisions as to which animals do we choose and which ones don't. Because it is a lot of pick and choose, you know, of course aggressive, anything that shows any kind of aggressive tendencies towards us, unhealthy animals, old animals, those are going to be the first to go. And then unfortunately, the owner surrenders, which is why we try to keep people from surrendering to us if at all possible. Because those animals are immediately our property, once they've signed those owner surrenders, those unfortunately have to be done first if it's a space issue. And that's where we come to the managed intake of owners wanting to surrender. It'll have to be scheduled date and time for them to come in to surrender. And trying to keep some of those animals at home as well by counseling and stuff of that nature.
This obviously is a very sensitive subject and, and you're handling it very well. Thank you for that.
I try. I've been doing it for a little while now, but it is, it is definitely a hard job on a day-to-day basis.
Some people love you and some people hate you.
Yeah, it happens. Yes, sir.
Do you recall the stats from the surveys in regards to this particular question?
Five business days was the most frequent answer.
The stats per the, the public surveys were 66%, 70% voted for, you gave a couple of options?
Not off the top of my head, I don't.
I just wanted to know what the public's sentiment was in regards to this particular one, as they are county voters and county citizens as well. So I wanted to keep in mind the, the county citizens' input as well.
Absolutely. And there's, council does not need to make a decision on this recommendation tonight. I'm happy to share that information with you as well. It is already on the city website as, with the results of the survey. And so I'm happy to, to get that out and, and we can look back at that and have this discussion again at the next meeting so that everyone has a chance to digest the, the ramifications of this recommendation. Right?
What, what you're, what I, I'm hearing is that maybe this is a great opportunity for citizens to contact Commissioner's Court for an expansion to accommodate this five days. And you don't have to comment.
I wasn't letting you comment. I was going to let that lie right there.
I didn't say it, you did.
All right. So moving on to the next comment, the next change to the ordinance, we heard from a lot of feedback that said that we should be focusing the punishment on the pet owner, not the pet, punish the person, not the dog, and that the code should be set up to enforce strongly against repeat offenders. Because it, anyone can have an incidental issue, but it's the repeat offenders we really need to target. We already had a section in our code called Irresponsible Pet Owners. It created a second separate criminal offense called Irresponsible Pet Owner. To my knowledge, we have never used that section. It simply was not something that was palatable to either animal control or the prosecutor or the, the judge. I'm not sure exactly why. But in this draft, what I've done is eliminated that separate criminal offense and instead reconstructed this section to be an escalation. So that if you have multiple offenses within one year, then the penalties are maximized. It is a maximum fine available if you're convicted at a time when the offense takes place less than a year after the last time you were convicted. So it is, it's intended to be an escalation and, I guess that's all I have to say about that. All right. Moving on. There is a section in the code, four dash 35, that is designed to prohibit excessive restraints of dogs. There were a lot of comments about tying dogs out to trees, and that's what this is intended to address. As I said before, state law covers this, but loosely. And there was a provision passed by the state legislature in the regular session that would have tightened up the restraint. We included that as a part of our code, as a part of the process of including many of the state laws in our local code. And then the governor vetoed it. Animal Control asked us to keep it in initially, and it was included in the proposal that was brought to you at the beginning of August. Since that time, the governor has asked for the legislature to bring that back to him. That is now Senate Bill Five. It has passed the Senate and is being considered by the House. I don't know whether it will be adopted by the state legislature and become state law. But our community spoke often about the need to regulate dogs being tied out to trees, dogs being tied out in inhumane ways. And so we have incorporated the language from Senate Bill Five into our local code. And if that passes and becomes state law, I'll bring an amendment later to take this back out of our code. But in the meantime, since it is not yet state law, it is my recommendation to include it. There was a lot of discussion about fowl and chickens. And so in this draft, the recommendation is that fowl pens be relocated out of front yards. I was about to say to the backyard. We had a discussion about that at the workshop. And the language that we settled on was that fowl coops would be at a location not visible from a public street. And so the idea is to relocate the fowl to generally the backyard. We have sections of our town that are not, the neighborhoods are not typically fenced. And so we didn't want to use language that would imply a front yard or a backyard or a screening fence. And so the chicken coop can be located at a place that is not visible from the public street. And I think that's going to address most of those concerns. We have setback areas and we have minimum run and coop areas that need to be complied with in order to keep chickens. But just as we did with dogs and cats, we are eliminating any cap on the maximum number of fowl that can be kept. The language, the feedback that we heard was that as long as you're taking care of your chickens, you should be able to keep your chickens. And so you see at the, the last two lines there, the chicken coop must be kept sanitary as to prevent the development of health hazards or offensive odors. Yes, ma'am?
I want to talk a little bit more about not visible from a public street. Because just now you said, you know, it could be in the backyard where not visible. I think I was kind of envisioning possibly the area being fenced as another way to do that. But I think I received one comment from a citizen that not all fences are created equal. And the fear that not visible from a public street could turn into some plywood sheets laid against the coop or something like that. How do we, how do we regulate what we consider pretty when everybody has different ideas about that? Can we put a requirement of it being behind a privacy fence? Is that something other folks think about or? I'm just kind of throwing that out there.
We do have standards for fences.
The, the phrase that's typically used in our code is screening fence. You may have a, a fence that is obstructing view. And if that is the direction that council would like to go, I'm happy to sit down with our Development Services Department and review those sections of code that deal with screening fences and privacy fences and draw some language from that that would be consistent with other areas of our code.
And to be clear, we currently do not have a fence permit. Some communities have fence permits and through that process stipulate a bunch of stuff. We don't have that.
Something we may need to just consider. What it would look like.
I think it is because, you know, I can see throwing a tarp over it and saying it's not visible.
I'm making a note to bring that back for discussion at the next meeting.
Then I have a question on two A there. No closer than 25 feet to the nearest inhabited dwelling.
Yes, sir.
Now, is that the dwelling, the homeowner's dwelling? So you gotta be 25 feet away from it and 25 feet away from-
Other than, other than- Other than the owner of such fowl.
Oh.
Yes, sir, that, that means other, someone else's house, not your house.
I got that somehow, I missed that one, I got stuck on inhabited.
On item D there, we talked about health hazards or offensive odors. I know we've talked before also about noise issues. Is, does that need to be incorporated into this? Is that handled separately?
I'm going to make a note to bring that one back as well because I have said before that we have a noise ordinance on the books and that we could use that in this way as well. So let's have a discussion about what exactly our noise ordinance says and, and whether or not that's sufficient to meet the concerns that you have.
Okay.
All right.
Do, do keep in mind that some of these situations should be controlled by the deed restrictions in some of the subdivisions. I know there are some places that there are fowl that are not in a restricted area, but, you know, the, the citizens or the residents in that subdivision have the restrictions. It's a private civil matter for them to enforce. But I don't think that we should be in the business of trying to regulate so that they don't take advantage of something else that is there for them.
Thank you.
Yeah, but I also think that most HOAs or, or the deed restrictions have been violated so many times in a neighborhood that they would not withstand any court test. And that becomes the issue is that it's just, the HOA never developed after the developer left or took control and deed restrictions aren't valid then.
All right. The next comment, the next change is really just an overview of some minor changes throughout the code. For example, we made a change that says unsanitary conditions, like in the chicken coop situation, our health and sanitation offenses will fines up to $2,000. That's an escalation from what cities offenses typically are only $500. But state law allows you to go up to $2,000 for health and sanitation offenses. And so we specifically call that out in the animal code so that those can be escalated as well. We have an exception for traditional ranching practices. It was pointed out to us that the section in animal can, Standards for Animal Care that talks about burning or maiming animals might be used to try to say you can't brand cattle. And so we certainly don't want to do that. We recognize that there are cattle that are raised within the city limits. And so we just created an exception for traditional ranching practices, and that would also include dehorning as well. Finally, we have a notification provision in there for striking an animal. There was a lot of concern about language that was in our previously existing code that said, an owner, if you strike an, an animal on the roadway, you have to go out in the roadway to remove the animal and check on it, make sure, you know, render aid if necessary. We have eliminated that and so that now the obligation only is to notify the owner if known or to animal, or to notify Animal Control. That's it for the changes in what was proposed to the community. There are however, four more slides in my presentation. There is a slate of amendments that I would like for council to commend, to consider tonight. They are very short, they are not- They are very short. They are non-substantive. But since the time that I posted this draft to the public, there have been things that have come up and we realized that some clarifications would be improvements. And so I have these before you as a slate of changes on your desks and I'm just going to run through them very quickly. In section four dash twenty-two, we would like to remove the last phrase. This section states that animal shelters, the Victoria County Animal Shelter shall be used for the impoundment of animals found running at large within the city limits. And then goes on to say, and other regulations the county might set out. And so, I'm sorry, I think I have the wrong language struck out there. Let me come back to that one. I apologize for that. Section four dash twenty-three. Yeah, in section four dash twenty-three, we're going to change city to county. The reason for here is because after the holding period, the ownership of the dog needs to transfer. We had it originally as city because these are city regulations. But it was, somebody brought up, wouldn't it make more sense if that was actually the county that has ownership of the animal, just as they do under the state regulations? Just for clarity, because they're going to be the entity making the decisions anyway. And then four thirty-three, that is simply a typo. I left out two words, shall be a fine. It said shall fine in an amount. And then four dash fifty, we noticed the word vocational is used in that sentence that goats can be located on the property of a vocational school. I'm not sure why that word has been in our code, but if we strike the word vocational school and it will just now say any school that's intended to capture the V I S D livestock barn, should they keep one up and running. Okay?
I have another question from that section.
Yes, ma'am.
The version, one of the versions that I found, four fifty, it said male, well, and this is titled male goats, swine prohibited. Now, I don't know much about goats, but the version that before said no person shall keep, feed or raise, keep, feed, raise or maintain male goats within the city. And then B went on with swine. And you've removed male goats completely except in the title.
It appears that way based on what's on the slide ahead of you. That is an, that's an autocorrect error.
Autocorrect, okay.
The text that's on there is actually section B.
Okay.
And that is not intended to be a change. I apologize for that. That's something that Microsoft Word corrected for me. When I, I was trying to fit it onto this slide by eliminating paragraph A just to make it fit the space I had available.
I don't want you to think that I have this memorized, but I was kind of intrigued with the goats and was reading about it earlier and then, then I noticed that they were missing.
I'm impressed both by your memory and your interest in goats.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Once we finalize this animal code, does it affect the ETJ?
No, sir. These regulations would only be effective in the city limits.
Any further questions for Mr. Goush? We do have a motion and a second on the table. Does anybody care to make any motion to amend?
Make a motion we amend as written.
I would, I would ask that that motion to amend include only the second, third and fourth of those changes. I did not do a great job of explaining the first one and I'd like to, a chance to do that again. At the next, I'll bring that one back at the next meeting. I just, I think that my PowerPoint slide didn't match what's in front of you. And I'd like the public to clearly understand what it is that we're considering.
With the exception of the first section.
I'll second his motion and then I wonder if we can later come back with a little bit of discussion on this other one, just so we can get it completed.
Vincent?
No, the, the first one.
I think we can do that tonight. I don't think that's an issue. But this first motion to amend.
Is for the.
Let's go ahead and take care of that. We have a first and a second that I hear.
Yes. Yes.
Is there any further discussion about those three items? The four twenty-three E, four thirty-three A, B, C, and four fifty male goat swine B, two.
Four twenty-three is E or?
Yes, it's E is another autocorrect issue.
Not A, okay. Thank you.
And four fifty with B?
B.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, for catching all of that.
Sure. All right, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Amendment carries.
And then let's take a look at four twenty-two.
So. Four twenty-two.
Are you thinking that it was the, the first one should be crossed out and not the second one?
No, paragraph B, what's on the screen in front of you, the language that is struck out is the wrong sec, the wrong language to be struck out. As proposed, what's currently on in the proposal, that sentence says, starting at the beginning, Victoria County Animal Shelter shall be used for the impoundment of animals found running at large within the city limits and for such other purposes as may be prescribed by the provisions of this chapter, comma, and for such other purposes as may be prescribed by Victoria County. And that last clause is, in my mind, trying to tell the animal control shelter that they need to follow the rules of the county. And I think that's probably not our place to tell them that they need to follow the county rules. And so I recommended striking that language. But what's on the slide here is unfortunately inaccurate.
But I think what's on the slate that you gave us is accurate.
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Okay, I'm just making sure I understand.
Yes, sir. And it's that confusion between what the public is seeing over your shoulder.
Okay.
And, and what is actually in front of you. I want to make sure that the public has a chance to actually see that. And so I'm happy to bring that back at a later meeting if y'all would like.
Okay, that makes, that makes sense.
I think we'll take care of it right now.
He's afraid that the public won't understand what we're striking. I mean, we could, we could read it.
If you word the amendment properly.
Right.
Mayor, one of my recommendations is going to be, not recommendations. What I plan on doing after this is I'm going to post a new version of this online right beside this one that says, as amended on first reading. And so if you choose to go ahead and make this amendment tonight, it'll be included in there and the public can see it there. I suppose that may be satisfactory.
And so, and basically what you're going to bring back to us is that it, the part that's stricken on the slide in front of us will not be stricken in, in your proposal. And it will read exactly.
It, it will read the way it's read, it shows up there, yes.
So I just need a motion to amend if y'all would like to continue with that tonight.
I'd like to continue.
Second.
Okay, so the motion to amend four twenty-two B to strike the last portion of that paragraph and for such other purposes as may be prescribed by Victoria County, period.
Such that it would read exactly as we're looking at including what is struck on the slide.
There you go. Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Mayor, if I, I appreciate council's discussion and if I may take one more second on a very long presentation, I want to conclude the same way I concluded the second town hall meeting. I'm proud of our community. This is an emotional issue that became even more emotional because of some events that happened in between the two town hall meetings. And our community members came out and they spoke passionately, but they also spoke respectfully. It has been a great honor and privilege to get that feedback and to bring it to you. And I thank you for your, your warm-hearted consideration of those, those changes. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment that somebody told me that they admired the way that we handled this issue and that they hope that we continue to do town hall meetings for anything that, you know, involves the community. For instance, the redistricting, if we can have the town hall meetings. You know, I think that people are now getting involved and I think it would be a plus for the city.
I heard that comment as well. I, I think it's great, yeah.
So did I.
No, I, I appreciate the community involvement. I, I really do. Makes our job easier and it's how it's supposed to work. It's a government for the people, by the people. So appreciate it and really, you were right, good respectful comments. So we have a doubly amended motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign and a motion carries. We're on to the consent agenda, items D one through four.
Item D one is the adoption amendment of the regular meeting on September twenty-first, 2021 and the special meeting on September twenty-fourth, 21. Item D two is a resolution approving a variance for section twenty-eight-five for a property located at forty-seven oh two North Vine Street to allow the property owner to reconstruct an existing non-conforming driveway. Item D three is a resolution approving a variance to section twenty-one dash ninety-two for properties located southwest of the intersection of Odom Street and Callow Street and being parts of tract one, two and six of Farm Lot Four, Block Three, Range Three, east below town in the original four league grant to the City of Victoria for the development of a new multifamily apartment complex. And item D four is a resolution approving a variance to section five dash one forty-nine and five dash one fifty-two for properties located at eighty-four oh one North Navarro Street, eighty-four oh five North Navarro Street, one zero eight Primrose Street and seven zero two Bingham Road.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and a second. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign if you oppose. All right, D five.
Item D five is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2022 inner local agreement with the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission to operate Victoria Public Transit in an amount of $209,000.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Hi.
Good evening, Josie. I have Lisa Cortinas with the translator.
The two hundred and nine, is that more or less than what you've normally gotten?
That's been, councilperson told you that's been the same amount for the last, if I'm not mistaken, six years.
Six years?
Yes.
And, and I was thinking it was two ninety, so I thought, okay, maybe we just, okay, so it's two oh nine, okay. That's what's my question.
I bet she would take two ninety.
I'm sure she would.
I would.
Yeah. We might get some more stops down south side.
If I may, I would like to invite the council. You will be getting an invitation. We are finally implementing our passenger wifi on our buses. So we're going to have an event on the last Wednesday of the month. And it'll just be a small event. Our board of directors will be involved and we're going to send out an invitation to city council. So you'll know more about that.
Is that grant funded?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those, are there any further questions or discussion? All those in favor of D five, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E one.
Item E one is a resolution approving a contract for fleet maintenance and management to First Vehicle Services Incorporated for the annual amount of $1,198,827.77.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for listening to me tonight. We've got a new fleet contract in front of us. Our old one is expiring and we needed a new one, so we went out and found one. We have, we procured this by competitive sealed proposals, so we received three bids total. Two of them were complete and of the two, we chose the following. We'll go through the presentation and I'll show you. A little history, the composition of our fleet is composed of light duty vehicles, heavy duty vehicles and public safety vehicles, all in total 272 vehicles. This bar graph shows the difference of what we actually pay versus what our contracted rate was. The blue bars indicate what the contracted rate was for the corresponding year. The red bar shows our actual dollars paid to our contractor during those years. The reasons for the overages are based solely on out of life cycle vehicles. There's, not solely, there's some other things like accidents and whatnot that we paying for. But you have this thirty-nine point three percent above the contract price is what we've paid on average over these last five years. So in our new contract, we really took some steps to try to mitigate that. We've taken some of your advice from the past. When we started the enterprise program, we looked at the maintenance piece and we decided that we'd like to divide that, is what the feedback I got from you at the time. So we've taken those hundred light duty vehicles and moved them to the Enterprise Fleet Maintenance Management Program. That's their named program. It allows us to incur much lower costs. I have another slide that'll show you the total savings. But we've moved those over as of October first, so that's, that's going to offer up a great savings for us. The rest of the fleet is what we needed this new maintenance contract for. First Vehicle Services, as you can see there, is the contractor that we chose to enter this engagement with. We've been with them since 2013. As far as I, as far as I know, I think that's right, Daryl, 2013? So 2013, that's what I found on the contract anyway. But our heavy duty vehicles consist of like class six to eight trucks, refuse collection vehicles, heavy machinery, stuff like that. Public safety, obviously, and fire and police. They're highly used and specialized vehicles, so they need specialized maintenance. Just an overview of enterprise, it's an open ended lease program that allows us to manage some cash flow savings each year. Their wheelhouse is single axle, non-emergency vehicles and maintenance costs are included with the lease price of these vehicles. So this slide shows the savings that we will see moving those hundred vehicles over to the Enterprise Fleet Maintenance Management Program. As you can see, the First Vehicle Services proposed price to maintain one of these vehicles is $2,155 per year. And then as we move those over to enterprise, you can see that $468 is on average what we're paying. It varies between like, you know, a, a little car or an F-150 or an F-350. There's a little bit of difference in there, but on average, it's $468 a year. So we see a savings of $168,000 right off the bat, which is wonderful. Our new contract, and this is the way we intend to mitigate some of those out of life cycle charges. Each vehicle in that contract, and if you'll remember in my previous presentations on this, I mentioned that the contractor was not forthcoming with how much it costs to maintain an individual vehicle. Through this process, we've established that. So as you can see here, this fire truck, the cost to maintain that based on the contract is $15,085 per year. Consider that a balance applied to that vehicle at the beginning of the year. And every vehicle in our fleet, regardless of its status, in or out of life cycle, receives that balance at the beginning of the year. So everything we have starts out on the contract. Where currently, anything out of life cycle is off of the contract at the very beginning of the year. So before they can start billing us non-contract charges, they've got to exhaust this balance that's applied to each one of these vehicles. So say this fire truck goes in for maintenance throughout the year and six months into the year, they've spent all $15,085. At that point, we have to make a decision of who's responsible for paying for the remainder of the maintenance on that vehicle for the year. If it is within its life cycle, First Vehicle Services is responsible for all overage charges. If it's outside of its life cycle, then the City of Victoria is responsible for those charges. So faster we can replace vehicles and keep them in their life cycles, the lower our overage costs will be. Now, that's confusing, so if we have questions, I'll answer them. So we also have some key performance indicators that are much better associated with this contract than our previous one. We had some on the previous one. I think we had six. This one has nine. And the values associated with these are much greater. We have the capability of penalizing the contractor up to fifteen percent of their invoice. Whereas before, we could only penalize them up to say maybe $1,500 a month on a hundred thousand dollar invoice. So this is a much better measuring tool for us. It allows us to hold them, hold their feet to the fire, so to speak. At the end of the contract year, if there is any savings, that savings is shared between the contractor and the city, fifty-fifty. So if they do a good job and save us some money, they make a little and we make a little also. That's basically it, the summary of what we talked about. There's some shared savings, some KPIs. All vehicles start out the year on a contract. And we divided this fleet utilizing some less expensive maintenance options. The term of the contract is five years initially. It has two, three-year extensions if we decide to move on those. And I'll answer any questions.
Explain or expand on life cycle.
Life cycle is what is determined, kind of determined by the, is it the National Association, a National Public Works Association? So it is the usable life of a vehicle in essence. Ours is defined by ten years of service from the date of manufacturer or one hundred and ten thousand miles on the odometer, whichever occurs first.
Is, is that a, a set life cycle for every vehicle? Or are there different life cycles for different types that maybe aren't used as often?
Right, there are some different life cycles. So off-road equipment is a s, s, ten years and six thousand hours on the engine hours. Refuse collection trucks have a shorter life cycle than any other. They're seven years with eighty-five thousand miles on the odometer.
Got a fire engine?
Fire engine is ten and a hundred and ten.
I have a question. I think it was.
I think it was last year I asked about the lease program, and I remember Gilbert saying something about, once we got 30% of our fleet transferred over to the, the lease, we had to have at least 30%, you know, to see a savings. I do see a savings now, but I just wanted for you to, you know, I was asking that because of that 30% of the fleet. So right now, we don't have 30% of our fleet in there, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. We have 16 vehicles leased at the moment. We just executed leases for, I think, 21 more vehicles for fiscal year '22, so we're going to be close to 30% coming up, you know, in another year or so. But this savings is utilized by moving the vehicles that we own over to just their maintenance program package.
Right.
Rather than leasing all 100 of them at the same time.
That's correct.
So there's also, just so that you know, we have also realized some savings other than in just maintenance. This year, enterprise came to us and said, hey, we'd like to take the F-150s that you have that are one-year-old, sell those, they're currently worth more than you paid for them, and then we'll give you new F-150s and apply that over to your new payment. The average payment was about $550 a month on an F-150, including the maintenance package, and now we're going to be down to about the 350 a month area on our new trucks.
When I came to you on this whole proposal about, I don't know, four or five years ago, we're accomplishing what we talked about back then. It just happened to be a smaller scale, but we're slowly moving into the more enterprise program stuff. I'm glad Roger hit on that 100 vehicles going to enterprise program maintenance. We don't have 100 vehicles, but slowly we're going towards that. But we have achieved our goal, but not that high level yet, but we're moving in the right direction. Let me give you an example. For example, in the prior years, we were able just to purchase about five or six PD cars. Now we're buying 12, I mean, we're leasing 12. So we're lived in that kind of cash to expand our fleet and everything else. At the same time, moving that cost where we can reduce it to a maintenance program like enterprise, which is Roger, enterprise itself. But anyway, they're doing a great job.
Yes, thank you, Roger. You're always bringing us cost savings and looking out for the taxpayers, and it's very, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions, entertain a motion for item E1.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. E2.
Item E2 is a resolution rejecting the bid submitted by Keystone Construction for the CDBG-DR infrastructure project, GLO contract number 20-065-055-C165.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you. If you'd like, I can probably summarize this a little more quickly than going through the entire presentation.
Yep.
Yes?
Yeah, because we've seen a lot of this before.
Right. So this, this funding was offered from CDBG for disaster relief, I'm sorry, after Hurricane Harvey. So all of these budget projections and estimates were made back in 2018, well before, obviously, we had a pandemic. And I would just like to tell you that almost all, and from what I'm understanding from talking to other grant professionals, almost all grant projects of every sort are experiencing some kind of difficulty related now to the pandemic, where the estimates were given before the pandemic, and now we're in the middle of trying to actually accomplish things. So what happened here was, in June, we bid the project, and we got no response. And then in August, we got one bid that was approximately 10 million over what our budget is. So what we proposed to do is change the scope of work, and I wanted to make sure that everyone understands that we're talking about still replacing all the floodgates, and we're still going to put in pump stations. What we want to do is simply reduce the capacity a little bit on the pump stations. That will require us to not buy so much specialty equipment. It's not going to take as long as shipping. So that is actually going to reduce the amount in, much more in line with the budget that we have with the grant.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
And so this item is just to reject the bid-
Reject the bid.
...that was originally submitted, and you're going to go back out to bid with the new scope-
Exactly.
-and bring it forward before us.
That's right.
Okay.
I move we accept item E2.
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, questions? All those in favor of item E2, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item E2 carries. Thank you, Ms. Conley. Item E3.
Item E3 is a resolution allocating funding to nonprofit organizations for fiscal year 2022 for the Child Safety Fund.
Good evening. I can run through this very quickly or give the full presentation, whichever you would prefer. Tonight's presentation is on the Child Safety Fund allocation for the grant program. We have been working on this for about two years now, and we're finally at the point where we are making funding recommendations. And so we did receive, just to clarify a little further on this, there is a two parts to the Child Safety Fund. Tonight's presentation is on the Grant to Partnership Program, where 60% of our funding is going towards nonprofit organizations, and there's other parts that are coming, which is the Car Seat Program that we'll have in this next fiscal year. And so our committee did receive four applications totaling $44,500 in requests, and we had a total allocation of $30,000 available in funding. We are recommending funding tonight for all four applicants, and we did utilize an objective data analysis. This is our committee that evaluated this. This is an internal city committee with members from our various departments, finance, municipal court, legal, and the police department. The objective data that we utilized when evaluating the applications are listed here. We had informational and applicant workshops, document compliance, credibility and transparency, units of service delivered, unduplicated number of children served, eligible use category based on the funding allocation, and those were child safety and abuse intervention and prevention, as well as drug and alcohol abuse intervention and prevention. Those were our categories. And then direct service delivery score based on 990s that were required to be submitted as part of the application process. This is our timeline here. We opened up in August on our applications. We started off with two informational workshops. Applications opened August 23rd. During the application timeframe, which was about three weeks, we offered three applicant workshops for organizations to participate in. Applications closed September the 10th. We evaluated, the committee members evaluated those applications the 13th through 15th. We then notified our award winners on the 16th. They were given an opportunity to appeal September 22nd. We received no appeals during that timeframe. And then tonight's presentation is on awarding that to the organizations. And then they are to be reimbursed on a quarterly basis based on funding we already have collected or received from Victoria County. These are the four recipients of the awards and the recommendations. You'll see here, we had four, Golden Crescent Casa, Boys and Girls Club, Hope of South Texas, and Mid Coast Family Services. And the column on the far right are the recommended awards based on our scoring data.
Tiffany, can you just explain a little bit for the public where this money's coming from?
Yes, so we began receiving money from Victoria County January of 2020, and it is from vehicle registrations. In January of 2020, $1 was assessed for all vehicle registrations, and we receive about 72% or so of that as we get the funding from them based on the city residents. And then, as of January 1st of this year, that amount was increased to $1.50 by the county commissioners, and so that did increase earlier this year. That was recommended by them last year to increase it, and that is the maximum they can increase that to. And so now we do have a fund balance available, so if this is something council would like to continue offering each year, we will have funding available each year to continue offering a grant to partnership program.
So the county keeps 28% of this fund for vehicles registered within the city, plus 100% of those registered in the county.
I think they get about a 10% administrative fee from anything collected within the city, and then, yes, everything from the county. That's my understanding of how that fund works.
And what do they spend their money on?
I'm not 100% sure.
They, they have a dedicated sole recipient of the funds, which is Hope of South Texas.
So that's why I was leaving the question, it's something for us to consider, do we want to duplicate efforts with organizations, since the county collects the same fee and goes to Hope of South Texas? Do we want to be able to spread it out more to some of these others, or not? And we don't have to make that decision this, this time around, but it's something to think about in the future, because I don't know the numbers of, you know, what the county collects and pays out to Hope of South Texas.
Well, did the applicants give you particular projects and perhaps with budgets, so that maybe Hope of South Texas is trying to fund a larger project and get some money from us?
Yes, so all the applicants were required to submit a budget form that showed where they anticipated on using the funding. Some were more specific in what that funding was for, versus some were using it for overhead costs like salary and various programs within their organization. So there were a couple of each, if you will.
And so then those organizations as a whole meet these categories?
Yes, they had-
And that's why they were allowed to go forward even on something like that?
That is correct, yes.
We'll need a motion.
I'm second.
Second, okay. Motion and a second is made. I'm not going to make any amendments at this time, it's just what I noticed, and I just want us to consider it and look at it a little bit more and see what county's spending with them, see if we can find maybe some other organization that could benefit as well.
Good comment.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Mayor and council, the next item on the agenda is item E4, a resolution appointing or reappointing members to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
I have prepared a presentation, but I believe it's all information that we've all seen before, so if you don't mind, we'll move forward with the voting. The ballots were placed on the dais for each of you. If you'll please place your name on the ballots, because you cannot vote by secret ballot, and those ballots will be available in my office for review if anyone would like to see them. So we have three places that are open, and we have three current members of the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commission that have asked to be reappointed, and we also have one additional application. So if you'll choose three, please, out of the four. Wait just a moment for us to tabulate this. So at this time, the three incumbent members of that board, or that commission, Ashley McGee, Brian Billingsley, and Jesse Olivares have received unanimous votes from the council, so their names will be placed in that resolution.
Can you get a motion?
Motion accepted.
Second.
All right. Motion to approve all the-
Jesse Olivares, Ashley McGee, and Brian Billingsley.
Thank you, for reappointment, is the word I was trying to think of. Thank you. Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, E5.
Item E5 is a resolution nominating a candidate or candidates to serve on the Victoria Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. Again, the, the presentation is, was included in the packet, but is information that has been seen before by you guys, so you can choose to nominate more than one person, or you can choose to just nominate one individual. Historically, the City of Victoria has nominated one of our council members to serve on that board, and Mayor Bot Knight currently has that duty for us, but I believe he's willing to give it up if somebody else wants to volunteer.
If we vote for more than two people, would they split the 862 votes?
Yes, ma'am. We, a future resolution will be brought back once we have the nominees from all of the entities, and the top five vote-getters will be the ones that get the seats. So if we split our votes, it's a possibility that our candidate does not get a seat on the board at all. But it is up to you.
Okay, explain that one more time.
Because we only have the 862 votes. If you looked in the packet, there was information concerning what all the districts get, so the Victoria County, as well as the school district, have larger number of votes than us. So like, the school district has almost three times as many votes as we get, so they, that's why you'll see that they sometimes can seat more than one person on the board.
Typically have three. The county has one, and the city has one. The port never has enough votes to get their candidate of choice on, or nor does Victoria College, our drainage district.
Yeah, most of the other entities don't have enough numbers to make a difference.
Well, I'll volunteer, but I won't fight anybody if they want to volunteer also.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott. Need a motion to nominate Ms. Scott?
Motion.
A second.
Any further discussion? You're saying. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you for your faith.
We've already covered the city manager's report, and so at this time, we're going to, we're going to recess for 10 minutes and then go into executive session. It's 7:03 right now, and we'll be back at 7:13.
At this time, the council will recess into executive session to consider items under Texas Government Code 551.087 to discuss or deliberate the offer to a financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the city council seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the territory of the City of Victoria in which the City of Victoria is conducting economic development negotiations, and under Texas Government Code 551.072 to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property interest due to the fact that deliberation in an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the city in the negotiations with a third party.